Everyone. It's Anita in the little box that you probably can't see. Actually, Carrie or LaShonda, you might want to spotlight, put the spotlight on myself and whoever I have scheduled to speak. So, welcome everyone, and I'm so glad you're here. How many people we have? Thirty-eight people. Oh, my God. Thank you. Thank you. I am excited. You know, before we got started, Andy asked me, what's the tenor of this meeting, Anita? What are we doing here? I said, we're, we're, we're being appreciative and we're celebrating. That's what we're doing. So that's the energy I'm hoping to bring and hoping that you all will share with me. Okay?
Yay.
Let me get my view together. Okay, there we go. I don't want to just look at myself. Welcome Shay, I see you. To staff. And welcome everyone else. So I'm going to do a little brief opening. With that same tenor, it's a, it's a, it's a short reading, it's a fairly short reading. And what I want to do, Chi-style, is invite you to center yourself, whatever that means for you, to, to hear these words. It's, it's actually an African proverb from the book, African Wisdom. One hundred and one proverbs from the motherland. This particular one is not from an identified country, but the author is Tukumbu Adilekun. And so I'm going to read this and, and as I, and, and listen and absorb the words, if you will, to prepare yourselves for tonight's hour of celebration and appreciation. And forgive the sound of my printer in the background. It'll stop soon. All right. So if you will, receive these words from Adilekun. It's titled, when it, and let me just say that some of the words I have, I have attempted to, to adapt his words to be interfaith and less patriarchal. And so forgive me, Mr. Adilekun. But I will do my best. The title is, "When a King Has Good Counselors, Her Reign Is Peaceful." When a king has good counselors, her reign is peaceful. That's the proverb. Leaders are gifts, but true gifts are not presented randomly. They carry purpose. They represent good intentions. The gift is meant to inspire, bless, or support another. The receiver honors the gift through proper use, management, and stewardship. Hence, gift exchange is a process, a story. That is why some gifts are living things, beings. As a gift, the leader reveals hard truths through stories of triumph born out of tragedy. The leader bears the wisdom forged in the crucible of challenge where creativity meets crisis head-on. Great leaders embody the moral strivings of their people. These are figures strong enough to draw insight, inspiration, and information from those they lead. A leader is only as good as the followers or companions. He or she is blessed to develop. To leave bias and prejudice out of the decision-making process is crucial. Choose counselors based on who is willing to sacrifice for the cause or the mission set forth by the divine. This does not mean that there will be no disagreement or debate. It does mean, however, that the final word always belongs to spirit. This is how to ensure that creation will be served. Good counselors understand that all are important, but no one is indispensable. And if divine will is served, all will be blessed. This is the meaning of peace.
Hello, everyone. My name is LaShonda Lewis, and I am the Communications and Media Specialist here at the Chaplaincy Institute. And today, as you can see on the screen, we have our agenda for the meeting. We had our opening and welcome. After the opening and welcome, we're going to transition into the State of Chi address, and then we're going to award our 2020 recipients for, from Chi. And then we're going to have our presentation of our new Executive Director. And then we're going to have a 10-minute session for Q and A. So we ask that if you have any questions or comments throughout this meeting, you just go ahead and drop them in the chat box below. And at the end, I'm going to look through the chat box and read the responses that we got, and we'll have a little Q and A session. So I just want to welcome you and thank you for being with us today.
So we're looking forward to, and I'm so excited. Let's move to the next slide. So we're out of the woods, and many of you that I've seen, I haven't seen everyone because now there's forty-six people in the room. But I know that many of you have been along this ride with me since, oh, gosh, March of 2019, when, when our, our former Executive Director had a family emergency, had to step away, and we realized we couldn't hire a new one. And so we've been working together a bunch of Chi lovers to make this, to get us out of the woods. And so there we are. And yeah, I mean, without giving much detail, which I will do in a moment. We're not, you know, I, I like to use the ocean as, as an example, you know, I say, well, you know, we, we thought we were drowning. We were like bobbing up and down, trying to catch our breath back in March of 2019. So we, we developed a plan, as you all know, to, to close the seminary, just in case. It was a Plan B. It wasn't Plan A. A Plan A is to survive it, Katrina, right? And we also, you know, began to look at how the community might function in the world without the seminary. So we did our due diligence. We did our work. We, we also gathered together the expertise from our friends in, in, in different areas, legal and, and finance and advancement, which you'll hear about later, to help us to establish and update our strategic plan in a way that would carry us forward and bring us not fully to shore, but, 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 but we're treading water really well, you know, we're treading water really well right now, I would say. And, and soon we'll have our feet planted in the sand. So, next slide. I want to give you a brief update on, on the status of our strategic plan. So in December, and that was in July of 2019, when we all got together in the auditorium over at Northbury Church and got together in these, these three groups, or was it two groups, and, and, and did sort of the hard work, the beginnings of the hard work of establishing our plans A and B and a little bit of C. Then in December, we had gone through some good counsel and some good work and rolled up our sleeves and pulled together strategic plan update. And so the, the, the next steps from that process in December of 2019 was to establish these three teams, a leadership capacity team, a financial adaptability team, and a program delivery team. This was done at the, with the guidance of Walter Collins, who at that time was just a friend of Chi, helping us out. And and we thank God for him. Bonnie Lang, who is now a board member and Chi alum, has led the Leadership Capacity Team. And one of the things that, that we've done there, one of the big things is that we've updated the bylaws for the Chaplaincy Institute. And they are scheduled to be adopted by the board next month. Really excited about that. They hadn't been updated for several years. There are other measures in the leadership, under the Leadership Capacity Team's responsibility include leadership of the seminary itself, leadership of the community as well. So we've started with the board, we've done somewhere, and leadership with staff. And we, we're making some strides there as well, as we'll announce in a few moments. For financial adaptability, that was led by Andrew Church. And gosh, one of the biggest things I think that happened there, we're trying to keep this brief so we can stay on time. But one of the biggest things that happened there was that we were able to establish a financial, a fundraising plan, an advancement plan. You know, we learned from Walter that advancement isn't just fundraising. It's how do we take the organization to, you know, the next place? How do we get it from, from this part over the bridge and to the next destination as a whole organization? And so it's not just a fundraising plan, but it's a, it's a plan that will hopefully help us to land in a place of security, where we're not praying every month that, you know, we get enough students and enough tuition in because that's our only source of income. And so we're moving in that direction, and you'll hear more about that in a moment as well. Program delivery is just getting started, and it's just getting started, not so much so because of any negative delay, but because we had just updated prior to 2019 and 2018, we had just updated and re-formatted, if you will, our curriculum under Lauren Van Ham's guidance and Katrina's guidance. And so it wasn't, we weren't in a desperate place programmatically in terms of our curriculum and how we deliver our program. We do want to look at it as, and make sure it aligns with our mission and our vision and our goals. And so that work is beginning just now, and Carrie Koppnick has agreed to, to be the facilitator of the group. These individuals are not necessarily experts in these areas, but they are really good facilitators. And so I think that if you want to jump in, there's an opportunity for you to participate on the Program Delivery Implementation Team. Just contact Carrie. That would be Carrie@chaplaincyinstitute.org. Next slide. So, brief accomplishments and aspirations. The Chaplaincy Institute is currently operates in three areas: the community, the seminary, and everything else pretty much falls under operations and administration. And so our, our interim Community Minister is currently Carrie Kopp, who's on the line and rolling the slides. And, and so I'm just, you know, they've given me some written updates, and so I'm just going to read a few from them for this meeting. There are more. A couple of accomplishments that Carrie has lifted up for her, for her role, so not necessarily for, for her as an individual, but for the Community Minister and for the community that she is connected to and leads in so many ways. Is that most of the core competency panels were completed for the next round of ordinance. There is now a monthly contemplative service for our community. You know, our community is our ecclesial community, and I absolutely love that there is a regular place where folks can, can depend ongoing for spiritual nurture. Right? We're all spiritual caregivers, but oftentimes, you know, in, in my tradition, which is Protestant Christianity, I do that because of the state of our nation. But, uh, you know, oftentimes the pastor doesn't have a pastor, and so I'm really appreciative of Carrie establishing a monthly contemplative service that we can all depend on. And then the last thing I'll lift up here is that the elect, the Community Council has elected a new council, and that they're, that they're in place and they're working, and I can't wait to, to see and reap the benefits from that, see the fruit from that new, newly enacted, elected council. And I also have plans as Board President to invite the council into an even more active place in the organization, in the leadership of the organization as a whole. So you'll hear more about that soon. In terms of plans forward, I will lift up that Carrie says that she hopes to create a rhythm of contemplative services that are known by our community and reliable. Again. Then next, with the seminary, which Katrina leads for us as both our Dean of Students and Enrollment, and our Acting Academic Dean currently. One of the highlights that I want to lift up from Katrina's report is that we've created and continue to create, but pretty much have created a successful, fully online curriculum for both chaplaincy and spiritual direction students. This is awesome, guys. This includes new features to build connection and support of students via Zoom, the Zoom platform. Of course, we had some hesitance before this awful, awful pandemic. But what it has done for us that is positive is kind of kicked us in the butt and said, you know, okay, you gotta do this. And so now we know we can, and our enrollment is, um, you know, really, really high. I don't know. I don't have the statistics, so I don't want to start lying to you, but it's really increased, and maybe Katrina will get an opportunity to speak to that later. Some of the plans and goals for 2021 that Katrina has listed include to begin two spiritual direction cohorts within one year. We've never done that before. This doubles our spiritual direction enrollment. And one of the things that you all should know from me is that I love to lift up, and if you follow me on social media, you'll see that I do, that Chi is the original interfaith and truly interfaith spiritual direction program, and more and more people, because of the national, international trauma and grief that is, is happening, are going, are leaning into spiritual accompaniment in the way that, that we provide it. Because there's still stigma for therapy. There's still stigma for psychological counseling. And so, but there's no stigma associated with spiritual direction and spiritual help. And so I'm so glad that we are expanding our training program so that we can provide more folks in the world to help heal souls, right? And then the third thing I'll lift up is that we are still looking at bringing in a new faculty member to hold our prophetic voice and social transformation curriculum thread. Lastly, and I hope I'm on time, is from Andrew Church, who is our current Minister of Operations and Administration. And in his report, what I will lift up is just a few things, because you'll get to hear from him himself soon, is that we are recovering from a severe short, from severely short staff. We had a huge staff turnover and, and, and so we were short on staff. Everyone, I think, was doing at least two jobs. We now have a team of brilliant, creative, and hardworking folks who have invested their own livelihoods with us. We intend to honor the commitments, these are Andy's words, of these folks and have made these, honor the commitments these folks have made by continuing to nourish this organization. We're moving forward equitably with pay and benefits. We've raised the, the salaries on, on some of our permanent employees, and we're working to continue that and to provide more equitable benefits that would allow Chi to be an employer of choice for truly diverse mix of people. And then he says, "Prepare, we've prepared a staffing roadmap that allows each team member to shine and really bring their unique gifts and passions to bear for Chi." Finally, and very importantly, I mentioned earlier, we've developed a comprehensive advancement plan with the goal of, with the goal of establishing an endowment, haha, to, to ensure Chi's long-term success and inviting more people to bring spiritual care and support to the world through the Chaplaincy Institute. And so there's your tidbit in terms of what we've been doing in-house to move Chi forward. Next slide. Now I'd like to move into our Chi Words of Appreciation. You know, last year, family, I, with our anniversary, decided, okay, I'm the new president. Oh, my God, I'm the acting ED. I want to do something to acknowledge the folks who are making this thing happen and making it work. And so I established these awards. Well, now I think it's good to do it every year, because every year there's more and more people helping to keep Chi afloat in that flavor, in that theme of appreciation and celebration. I want to offer and share with you these awardees for 2020 from my office as the President of Chi. And so this year, in recognition of your commitment to serving through Chi in so many ways, your flexibility, tenacity, ability, and willingness to think outside the box, and your dependable leadership, we bestow upon you the earned title of Chi's Employee Extraordinaire, Andy Church. Would you like to have a word?
I just want to say thank you. Golly gee, I'm kind of blushing here. Yeah, this has been fabulous. I can't think of a better place to get to come and wake up on Monday morning or at 3:00 AM on Sunday, whatever it is, and to do this. So I'm just honored and pleased this can be to have this opportunity. So wow, thank you so much.
Very good. Thank you. Let's move on to our next award. This award is called Hidden Treasure, and you know, it, it goes to a consultant. I, I reserved it for the consultant that's helping us behind the scenes to kind of keep stuff together. Kind of watch, watch my language here. Last year, you know, Lisa Thorne was our hidden treasure. Some of you don't even know who she is, but yeah, she really works to keep things together. This year, Walter Collins, for your willingness to step in when called upon, and for your sustained care and wise shepherding of Chi into a new and fruitful advancement territory, we extend gratitude and acknowledge you as Chi's hidden treasure. You all really don't know the, the depth to which Walter has helped to hold us together. Thank you so very much. He initially stepped in as one of my volunteer advisory council members. You know, one of the things that I did in back in March, through March through, through June, is to, to, to call on my friends and go, I need help. And, and Walter was one of the people who stepped up and said, yes, I will help you. He is now our regular time consultant, filling the position of Development Director for us, that will hopefully someday, Andy, right, become a permanent employee, employee, employee of Chi. Walter, would you like to have a word? Unmute yourself.
Okay, thank you. Thank you so much, Anita and Andy and everybody, for allowing me to be a small part in what is such a wonderful transformation, organizational transformation in pursuit of Chi's just wonderful mission. So it's just a great honor, and I'm very eternally grateful and looking forward for the best is yet to come.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you, Shay. Next slide. This award, Outstanding Leadership, it, it's available and goes to any Chi stakeholder, any Chi family member, any Chi lover who has, for whatever reason, stood out as really caring about the work that we do and really exemplifying our mission. And so this year, Rin, again, and Pito, she can't, I mean, I'm sorry, they can't be with us today, forgive me, because they're, they're working and teaching others. But in recognition of your dedication, creativity, care, and attentiveness in the classroom, and wisdom and courage in the community, we offer our highest appreciation for your outstanding leadership. And so I'm so excited. Rin has already accepted this award, and we will be getting a hard copy of it to them soon. Next slide. Goes to our platinum donor of the, of 2020. And that award goes to Lynn Comestral and her foundation, Blitz Foundation. And it says, "Words cannot adequately, adequately express our appreciation for your graciousness and support of Chi's deep culture initiatives. You have supplied breadth to undergird the growth of Chi and, and her work, Chi's work in the world. You graciously chose Chi, and we enthusiastically choose you. I hope that, that Lynn gets to see this later, and she may be able to join us later, but she's not with us now, I don't believe. Lynn's donation, Blitz Foundation's donation, is one of the ones that has been used to offer scholarships to students of color to work towards the broadening the inclusivity and accessibility of what she is doing in terms of training spiritual caregivers. And so we're really, really appreciative of Lynn's gift. Let us move forward. Let me just make sure Lynn is not on the call and wants to make a comment. Can one of my co-hosts confirm or?
I don't see Lynn here.
Thank you so much. So next on our agenda is to formally, I guess, formally in person, as in person as we can get with Chi's family, because we've already done the press release, we've already told the world. But I wanted to present to all of you our new Executive Director. I am so excited. So, welcome, Andy. Andy has been a student, an Ordinan. He's been one of those volunteer members of the Advisory Council, advising me on finance before. I actually snagged him as Acting Minister of Finance and Accounting, and then we transitioned him into the Minister of Operations, where he literally took the baton from me and began to manage staff several months ago, many months ago. And so I'm so appreciative of that, that I recommended him to the Board of Directors after much vetting and a full interview process and selection process to become our next Executive Director. He's ready, and, and, and we're ready to roll. And so Andy, our new Executive Director, he officially starts on Monday in that role. Would you like to now have, have the floor?
Oh, my goodness. Yes, thank you. Can, can somebody give me a thumbs up if you can hear me? Okay, I have a paranoid thing about that. Okay, great. Oh, my gosh. Welcome, everyone. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Thank you, Anita. Thank you to our board, our hardworking, freaking amazing staff, faculty, students, larger community. Thank you. I love the Chaplaincy Institute. I want you to hear me say that. I love this place. From the moment I met Chi, it had me. You had me. Gina Rose's vision has grown up. I've gotten to see a little bit of it, but it's grown up, and it's now something like twenty-two years old. If I think back to when I was twenty-two years old, well, well, I was just saying, I'm really glad I had the gifts of mentors and guides to help me. And so now, the way I think of it is, now it's my turn. Now it's my turn, and it's your turn too. I ask each of you to join me in accompanying this amazing entity, this amazing being that is Chi into her third decade and young adulthood. Whatever your relationship with Chi, I invite you to come closer. In fact, could I ask you to just lean closer in body or spirit to the camera, just, just a little bit? Just, just lean in and feel your energy connecting more strongly with our energy, with this energy. I invite you to come closer. Whatever that means for you. So if you, if you donate to Chi, thank you. Please consider doubling down. If you volunteer, please consider bringing a friend. If you like what we do, tell somebody else about us. Help us spread the word. Because we are no longer dealing with scarcity, and I say that, I don't say that lightly, because we are no longer dealing with scarcity, I feel confident in donating back 2.5% of my salary because I know that my support will join your support in bringing more chaplains and spiritual directors into a world that needs those people. May this be a community of abundance for you, and may it be a community of abundance for all. Now let me say clearly that your support Now let me say clearly that your support need not be monetary to join in the work of community of healing and of care for each other. Join our discussions on social media. Come to our monthly contemplative services online. Our twice annual ordinations, sign up to help our community council develop programs or staff our community care line. People count on us. Help us, help us live into that. Let us envision and remember and embody what it means to be a family. Chi, I see you. I love you. And I am so looking forward to what the future holds through you. I am grateful for this opportunity. Ameen, amen, amen and blessed be. Welcome to each of you. And now I think we have some questions or suggestions. Is it too early for people to start throwing out suggestions?
And this is we need to do this. Oh, I thought we were going to be so behind schedule and I was going to be begging and apologizing for going over. But we want to open the floor now to all of you and hear your voices and your comments and your questions. And so in order to do that, well, we're going to have LaShonda read the questions as they came in on the chat. And then whichever one of us is the appropriate responder will respond.
Okay, thank you. So I saw a question earlier in the chat that said, I am interested in the spiritual direction course, but right now I cannot afford it.
Okay, that's a statement, but we do have, we do have a small scholarship that's available to any Chi applicant. And if that would be helpful, I'd encourage you to talk to Katrina Leathers. katrina@chaplaincyinstitute.org to see if that would help. If you are, if you hold a demographic that is underrepresented at Chi, we have additional scholarship funds that may help you. Some of those examples would be people who identify as male, right? It doesn't matter your presentation, but if you identify as a male person, you're underrepresented at Chi. And so we have scholarship funds for you. Or people who are folks of color, African Americans, whatever. If you are a person of color, we have scholarship funds have been designated for you. And in other, there are many other areas that would qualify for those restricted and designated funds. But please contact Katrina at chaplaincyinstitute.org to see if we might have some scholarship funds for you because we want you now. Next question.
Okay, so our next question says, will all classes be strictly online going forward? Or will it be a mix of online and in-person?
That's a Katrina question. Oh, unmute her. Carrie, I think you have to unmute her.
I did. Now, can you hear me now? Yes. Great question. So yes, COVID did a wonderful thing of forcing us, as Anita said, to create an online program that is really working. And we've discovered that we are more accessible to people across geographic range as well as the economic range. So the accessibility of our program online means that post-COVID, we still will retain about 90% of our programming through Moodle and Zoom online. And to not lose the wonderful thing that happens when we are together in body, we will be having two retreats every year. They're residential learning retreats that will include all students as well as alumni to some degree. We haven't clarified how the alumni part will work, but we're going to bring our communities together twice a year in a residential learning retreat on currently the dates are the first week in May and the first week in November for 2022. So that will be the in-person component and everything else will be online.
So we have a statement that says, I am also interested in volunteering and contributing in politics and spirituality program or something of the sort.
Andy, I'm going to let you take that one.
Oh my gosh, yes. Thank you for speaking up and for stepping up. I would ask you to send me an email. And I will plug you in and hit you connected with the right folks here at Chi. My email is andy@chaplaincyinstitute.org. And let's have a discussion, let's have a dialogue. And yeah, thank you. Thank you for wanting to step up. And yeah, look forward to seeing what you have in mind and figuring out how to honor that gift you're offering.
Next question is, I've seen some ideas of new elective courses and would like other ideas. Anyone? Anyone have any ideas to suggest?
Katrina, could you maybe speak to that? Or if someone else has a question? But we were talking about some possible electives.
Yeah, we, oh, I love that one, Margaret. We have some ideas that have been offered by various people through time. And let's see if I can remember them all. Corporate chaplaincy, complicated grief, home funeral, home funerals and green burials, digital ministry, something called multi-culty, which is looking at multicultural awareness. What am I missing? Restorative just peace circles.
Disaster spiritual care is one.
Disaster spiritual care, that one also, yeah. But I'm going to add the ones that I'm seeing in chat onto my list that I'm keeping for possibilities.
Somebody suggested a course on being a death doula, planning a death. We have a disaster care suggestion, spirituality with young people, children.
For the person interested in the death doula work and planning a death, I'm not sure, but I believe that, Katrina, help me if I'm wrong, that Robert Drake, Bob is still leading the elective, the course on dying and death. And that may be of interest. Is that true or not?
That course is an excellent course, looking at many dimensions of dying and death. And Bob Drake is very much a part of that. I believe Bob was, and I know you're on this call somewhere, Bob. I believe Bob was one of the original creators of that course. And that does look at multiple facets of that topic. So that's a great idea, Anita.
We had a great suggestion in the chat for a course for spiritual directorships, supporting caregivers of dementia, family members. And then we have a question, how about a class that focuses on doing the work of celebrant for weddings and memorial services?
We kind of have that one in Jacqueline DuHart. Pastor Jacqueline teaches the class on ceremonial and congregational ministry. And that does include that topic.
So we have liberation theology slash chaplaincy and then running interfaith organizations.
These are great ideas.
You know, one of the things that I also like to lift up and I invite you all to lift out into the world with me is that Chi is the elder in the interfaith movement, in the interfaith education seminary and community movement. We've been here doing this for, I think Andy said, 22 years. Now we're in our 22nd year. And despite the fact that we're itty bitty and tiny, we're doing it well. And our alums and our community are out in the world helping to heal folks and to make sacred connections all over the place. And we need to lift that up because right now, you know, many of you may or may not know, I'm a seminarian as well. Working on a dissertation to complete my PhD in spirituality. And there's so much cropping up all over about interfaith and interreligious programming, both in terms of education curriculum and practice. And I want so much for people to just know that we're here, that we're not cutting our teeth, that we know what we're doing, we're accessible. Oh, there's LaShonda.
We have another comment that says spiritual ecology, ecology. And then somebody commented and said, the online courses have been done so, so well. And I believe that concludes the questions in the chat.
I want to invite Lauren to talk just a second about spiritual ecology. Are you willing to do that? Maybe the ways we've done it and the ways we could do it in the future.
I'm happy to talk about that. There is an eco-ministry intensive that happens in June. And that course is three days. There's no end to the ways that eco-ministry is being interpreted and practiced now. Really, really emerged and continuing to do that. This is the one thing that I will say, and I'm happy to, I'll put my email in the chat box if people have questions. At least at the Chaplaincy Institute, the way that we explore eco-ministry is less about what the world's religions are saying about creation and stewardship and taking care of the planet. And it is more about how we ourselves are showing up on planet Earth in this time and feeling connected to the natural world and what that looks like in our spiritual care. So again, I don't know if that feels like spiritual ecology to whoever asked that question, but I'm happy to speak more with you and I'll put my email in the chat.
Somebody said, slightly different from elective, some opportunities for continuing education. And then we have complicated grief as another suggestion.
Complicated grief is big. And yeah, but Carrie, I wanted to invite you to talk about maybe some ideas that I've heard around the community, about the continuing education, you know, courses that even our alum might be interested in taking as continuing education.
I can't figure out how to spotlight myself. But yeah, I think that that is the place where our community council, our new elected body, thank you whoever did that, will really, once, you know, they're working in a really mindful pace to get established and figure out who they are and how they're going to work together. But once we get that done, I really think that community council can be a part of the Chi experience going on. So what is it we need as we're chaplains working in the world? I know when you're in the hospital and you're an interfaith chaplain, I was asked, what are you? You know, what are you? This is so unique. And so we come from this unique perspective, whether we're in corporate chaplaincy or we're a celebrant, or we're doing community ministry, eco-ministry, or we're working in healthcare setting or a prison setting. We need support in a way that other people don't. We don't have that denominational structure. We have our Chi community. And there's nothing to me more holy than gathering with my, my husband calls them the cheeples. You know, the people who are our Chi world, I think actually one of our groups calls them the cheeples too. But that, those are the people that can call me back to myself. Those are the people that can say to me, is this in line with your ordination vows? And so our continuing ed is going to come from us. So if you've got something that you need, something that you would like to offer, shoot me an email. I'll get it to the community council. And as we grow and become, we'll make these things be, we'll make them so. There's nothing like Chi. It's a very special and amazing place. We're so glad you're here and the best is yet to come.
I need to, this is Andy, hold on here, I need to just weigh in and shine a spotlight back on Anita for a moment. And Anita, I just want to say on behalf of, on behalf of Chi, on behalf of the staff and all the people who you rallied around the cause. What is that, two years ago now, a year and a half ago? It probably feels like a decade, I'm guessing, for you at times. Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. You showed up for Chi, you showed up for each of us in a way that I don't think anyone else could have done. And your leadership has been, has been pivotal. It has been sublime. It has been graceful. And it has been life-saving to this organization. So thank you so much.
Are there other voices that want to be heard? I don't, I still don't know if I see everyone. I don't know, John Mabry on spiritual direction, my fellow board members are here, I see them, I see you. Other voices that want to be heard before we close this gathering. Please just, can they unmute themselves now? Can we just mute, unmute everyone and just see what happens? A big scrum? And we can do popcorn for two minutes and then we'll close out with a special closing by our community minister. I see the Lisas.
Hi, this is Rhonda.
Who's that?
Chaplain or Linda.
Yes.
Thank you for the invite.
Thank you for coming.
Hello.
Hello, it's very nice to be part of this community.
You are welcome, Chaplain or Linda.
This is Lisa Thorne. I just wanted to acknowledge Andy and Anita for so much that they've done over the last couple of years. I'm so, I mean, I've been holding things for so long and I'm so grateful for all that you guys have done in the last couple of years and stepped up and it's made a world of difference. And I love working with you guys. Same with Katrina and Lauren for being around for so long with me. I love, I love all you guys.
Yes, yes, thank you.
And even though I'm behind the scenes, the energy of the current staff is really wonderful.
Thank you. We love you too. Another two voices, how about?
So my name's Anne and it's been a while since I was ordained. And it's just really heartwarming and wonderful to have stepped into this meeting and be able to feel the group and the community. And I'm glad, I'm glad we're out of the woods. That's a really nice phrase for saying it. And Andy, it's so great to see you just looming into leadership here. So yeah, thanks.
Anne, is it appropriate and okay if I put you on the spot as one of our regular supporters?
Sure.
Thank you so much. That's all I want to say. I just want to lift you up and say that I see you and I appreciate you for your regular consistent support.
My pleasure, my pleasure.
I am so, this is Yurgen, grateful too for Anita for leading us out of the woods. I remember that meeting that we had, that meeting of the board and the faculty and the staff. And when we had to make a backup plan for closing and that was so sad that that might be an opportunity. And at the same time, you rallied us into a plan to keep us going as Plan A. And here we are. So thank you from the bottom of my heart for getting us here and with your wonderful gifts of administration and leadership. And so grateful for Andy coming through as a student into ordination and to becoming our executive director. And I feel, looking at this wonderful collection of people, the presence of spirit at Chi. When I taught my first class in the fall of 99 and when Gina Rose started us off, she was with us through many near-death experiences and resurrections. And I feel there was always a presence of spirit. I think Gina Rose brought that at the founding. She just surrendered it all to a higher power and. She just surrendered it all to a higher power. And if we keep doing that, I think we will be blessed.
Well, I am going to invite Carrie, our currently interim community minister, but hopefully someday permanent to give us a Chi like closing.
Thank you, Anita. I invite everyone to put your feet someplace solid on the ground or tucked under you. Place your hand on your heart. And if you've got us in gallery view, look at all of these faces. We are one. We are together. The web of connection through spirit, through our hearts, through our experience at Chi brings us together in this beautiful, beautiful world. We are connected. We are whole and holy and good. I have a poem for us. Now that we are out of the woods. Rebirth by Alex L. There will be moments when you will bloom fully. And then won't only to bloom again. We can learn anything from flowers. It is the resilience. It is that resilience is born even when we feel like we are dying. I feel the resilience in you Chi. I feel spirit in you. Go forth. Bless the world. Amen.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you so much for being here.
Thank you. This, this town hall meeting is now adjourned.